Government Board of Trustees Meeting is called to order at 5:15 PM. 1.2 Public Input Concerning Items on a Closed Session Agenda. About all members of the public who have requested to address the Government Board regarding items that are on closed session agenda. Is there any public input concerning items on closed session agenda or does not? So, 1.3 will determine if a closed session or a meeting in closed session will consider the following matters. 2.1 Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Government Code 5495-6.98. One matter as identified on the agenda. 2.2 Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Government Code 5495-6.98. One matter as identified on the agenda. 2.3 Conference with Labor Negotiator Government Code Section 5495-7.6. One matter as identified on the agenda. The Board will adjourn in closed session at 5:16 PM. Alright, all components of the meeting, everyone? 3.1 Call to order for a meeting in open session. Call to order for an open session. Meeting in open session at 5:54 PM. By law, in board policy, it must notify you that this meeting is being recorded by law. And board policy and a member of the public may address the board on an item on the agenda or a non-agenda item, but the public must present a written request to the board. Therefore, I ask you kindly to submit your speaker slips at this time. Help us round efficiently. Speaker slips for non-agenda items need to be returned in prior to Item 4.2, Hearing of the Public Regarding Non-Agenda Items. If recognized and called to voting at this time, you have three minutes to address the governing board. Those individuals who wish to comment on a particular agenda item, your speaker slip will need to be turned in by Item 5.9. Hearing of the public regarding agenda items will be recognized and called to voting when your request to agenda item comes up. You have three minutes to address the governing board. 3.2 Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. Agenda item 2.1, OAH Case Number 2023060311. In closed session by unanimous vote, Board of Zero with number Calpurn absent. The board voted to approve a compromise agreement to release the student in OAH Case Number 2023060311. Agreement resolves an ongoing dispute related to a student via reimbursement in exchange for a waiver against the district. Agenda item 2.2. Board took action to approve a settlement agreement in the matter of Rash versus Delmar Hills School District, San Diego Superior Court Case Number 37, 2019, 00050250, CUWTCTL. The district defended the lawsuit and prevailed at the trial court level. After dismissal by the trial court, it became the district case of appeal. The court of appeals ruled the matter to be tried by jury. San Diego County Office of Education Joint Powers Authority, the agency that oversees and covers litigation toward the district from a risk management perspective, negotiated and recommended that the district enter into a settlement to minimize the cost of jury trial. Accordingly, with the recommendation of the San Diego County Office of Education Joint Powers Authority and District Council, in closed session by unanimous vote, Board of Zero with number Calpurn absent. The governing board voted to approve a settlement agreement that the plaintiff will dismiss the lawsuit and release the district of any and all pending claims in exchange for a payment of $200,000 which will be paid by the San Diego County Office of Education and Powers Authority. 3.3 Let me...
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
3.4 Rule of Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So move. Second, third. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the agenda passes. Four, correspondence, mutations. 4.1 Correspondence of the Board.
Good evening. The superintendent's office received the following correspondence regarding district business on this topic. The Board attended. Thank you.
1.2 Hearing of the Public Regarding Non-Agenda Items. Will allow all members of the public who have requested to address the governing board regarding items that are on the agenda? Members of the public who would like to address the governing board regarding non-agenda items must complete and submit a speaker slip at this time. Okay, let's take them in order. First we have Jenny Sova, and second we have Jenny Foles.
Hi. I'm looking at this non-agenda public comment because the Delmar Hills community's concerns have not been included on any of the board meeting agendas or otherwise addressed by the board, including in response to their May 2023 no confidence statement. And some of the reasons why parents do not feel this school is a safe place for their children to learn and grow is that the school failed to note that an eight-year-old somehow wildlife school had a blood alcohol level of 0.23% despite the obvious symptoms. Has consistently imposed consequences of students of color, including disproportionately suspending Asian students. Has failed to properly address allegations of bullying, including claims that male students have physically harmed younger female students. They also inform parents and guardians about disturbing incidences in the classroom and also that their children have been bullied or injured at school. Directed students to write statements about misconceptions that they have experienced or witnessed and then refused to provide parents and guardians with copies of their children's written statements. And retaliated against a racial et cetera minority student who filed a bullying report by falsely accusing that child of being physically aggressive with another child. Further, the district has not addressed white language being used at school, including the N-word and racial slurs directed at Asian and Hispanic students. In addition, as a district test of the paid warrants in a manner that prevents the public from knowing which service providers the district is paying, I'll email the board a formal curating warrant and cease and dismiss by. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Jenny Foles Dom. After that will be Jenny Fritz.
Hello again. First, I want to thank you for your help in getting the swings replaced at Delmar Hills. Parents have been asking for two years at PTA meetings to get the swings replaced, but nothing happened until you guys intervened. The swings were switched out within two weeks of the last four meetings. And since then, my son reports that it's been a line ten kids deep for each of the four swings during recess lunch. So the kids are happy and we parents are very grateful. Second, I wanted to address the low capture rate and declining enrollment in our district. I actually live across the street in the small gated complex of homes from here, and I know the majority of my neighbors. Over the summer, new families moved in and I learned that less than half have chosen to enroll in our public schools and are instead choosing private schools and their district does not have a good reputation. Word has gotten out that the academic rigor for reading and math is not good at Delmar. Also, with moves to get rid of things like libraries along with delays to make our campuses more secure, parents do not trust the district with their children. Yes, our test scores are high, but I believe that can primarily be attributed to the larger number of educated professionals such as engineers, scientists, doctors, and lawyers in our community. Our local families value our education and we supplement our children's learning with music and art, after school language and tutoring programs, as well as more academically challenging programs like that offered at AOPS. AOPS might as well be an extension of Ocean Air as so many Ocean Air families go there. Also, if you go to Huntington Learning Center just down the street from Delmar on any given weekday, you're going to see a large number of Delmar Hills students trying to catch up to grade level there. At first, some of us were shocked and confused to find out that even one of our own board president, Mr. Mock, doesn't think our district schools are good enough for his own kid. So he sends him to a private school. But as many of us have started to see our children backslide academically, we have seen what it takes to catch them up or to challenge them more. Mr. Mock's decision makes sense. Still, not all of us can afford private school or even private tutoring or because of special needs, these options aren't available to us. Many of us actually bought homes in this area because of the schools, but are finding unlike fifteen years ago, our schools are not academically rigorous or even simply physically or emotionally safe places. Small class sizes are a good thing, but not if it's the side effect of educated, financially secure parents opting out of the district. Most importantly, some of us value public education and want to see our children thrive at and along with neighborhood schools. Mr. Mock has made his position clear given his choice for his child, but many of us are wondering, what do you other board members and admin staff think? Do you share this value and the expectation that we want our kids to reproduce work at grade level? That we should be investing in supplemental tutoring? Or if we want our kids to be safe from harm, that we need to pull them out from their private school too? Thank you.
Good morning, students. And then, some particles. Hold it.
Hi, I live in fifth grade in Delmar Hills and I've been getting some students in the garden. I'm excited to let you know that some kids at school who are constantly using bad language and making fun of Jewish kids like rape or even the N-word for black people or the F-word for gay people. There are also some kids who are physically not that much open and open. Us students know that some of the disabled teachers do not help put a stop to these things. I try to avoid these kids, but I'm not able to stand between the heads of the same classes. I feel bad for my friends. I try to protect them. I know lots of moms and dads who ask the school to put a stop to these people at home. And I think I think that it changes how.
And then, Paul Jessica, again, for your last question. And I'd love to show you a picture of her.
Thank you for having me today. I am a high school student at Candy Crest Academy and it's DU HSD. And I have a story to share and a part of content to me. I went to school at Ashley Falls Elementary School for just sixth grade because I've been moved here after living in San Francisco for a few years. When I was a child with a 504 plan in place for my higher diversions. I am also a student activist for CCA students for marginalized groups. And many students from more districts ended up attending SUHSD schools, Pacific Trails, Carmel Valley Middle School, CCA 401s, etc. My 504 plan was not recognized as valid at my elementary school and I felt very much like a problem. I had access to counseling at all times according to my 504 and my school counselor was either never available or never on campus. I ended up suffering from debilitating anxiety and depression as a twelve-year-old and felt unsupported on campus. With that being said, schools need to be more aware of 504 plans or IDPs and hope to correctly accommodate these students to feel safe and have... I'm sorry. Equitable access to all content being brought upon awareness. Many young students I have talked to have told me that they do not feel safe at school and regarding marginalized groups as records before, such as black, Jewish, Muslim, immigrant. All educators and other members of this body should know that hate starts here and grows and festers into what is seen on high schools and middle school campuses. Middle school campuses are different than elementary and I am aware of that as I lived through. The hate I experienced on campus was easily as awful, but I will spare you the details. Hate starts at the elementary level and are taught by parents. And many students learn that since there are no repercussions for yelling a slur casually on campus, they are allowed to let the behavior continue. That needs to end. Finally, I want to say that we are not here to ask for some students to be placed above others just because historically they have been treated unfairly. We are asking for you to give an even playing field to everyone, not just those who are predisposed to having such accessibility. We want to have equality, not special treatment.
Last, tell us your...
Thank you. I'm just here because I wanted to thank the Delmar Hills student who came and spoke today. I know that took a lot of guts and courage and I'm settled in awe of the clarity of your words and your respect to them. And I also want to thank that he came today as a high schooler Ben is not part of our school district, but nonetheless is generous enough to come and share a valuable insight with us. And I think it's important that we learn from what we shared today that when bullying and intimidation and harassment occur at the elementary school level and are allowed to persist, and the reason that people are here today is because of Delmar Hills. For only about week three, we had three different scores of views of our school in the upper grade. When that kind of context is allowed to persist, it continues through middle school and high school, as we heard, and the impact on the victim is simply minimal. So I'm really appreciative to these two students who came today to show us what's happening in the present, what can happen in the future, and that gives us the opportunity to pave a path forward to truly address student safety and student wellness. We're not just DMUSD parents here today. I'm proud to say we are parents and community in unity. And we would like to know from the board, what will you do to help us pave a better path forward? Thank you.
5.1 For recognition, DMUSD employees that want to support the 2022 year.
Congratulations to the DMUSD employees of the month of September. From Ashley Falls School, Tracy Williams. From Caron Delmar School, Rachel Johnson. From Delmar High School, Courtney Masek and Melissa Rain. Delmar Hills, Nicole Bissa. Ocean Air, Eli Cantner. Pacific Sky, Amber Tracy. Sage Canyon, Fred Betty. Sycamore Ridge, Amy Sizer. Torrey Hills, Mike Hansberger. Early Toilet Development Center, Leslie Pollak. And from the district office, Julie Ben G. Bees. Joining me in congratulating these outstanding employees of the month of September.
1.2 Board of Report for Delmar Schools to A. Bellvine from Mary Jennifer. I see. Decentia by President Bonnie Assolts. Call for voting for Jason.
Thank you. Jason was kind enough to let me have an opportunity to share some insights from the Delmar teachers. And I first want to just say thank you to everyone on the board, from the board and to our committee members. Thank you, everyone, for hearing what we have to say. I'm here to let you know that our teachers and students are working really hard and we're off to a very smooth start this year. And I really attribute the smooth start to incredibly good and clear communication. Every step of the way, things have felt the best they've felt in years. And it's not just me and it's not just me saying this is the conversation that we're having and at the meeting that we're talking about, how is our school year opening? And so we are very, very grateful. Thank you for really clear communication. We also notice the extended efforts of our principals, the staff, the front office staff, the staff at the district office, Molly, Megan, everyone who is there to help us is really making an incredible effort. We notice and we are appreciative. And it allows us to create the most engaging and joyful learning experiences for our students. And the first part of the year really is one of the most joyful times. The kids are happy to be back and we are doing all kinds of things to build those bonds between schools and teachers, between students and students. And we truly see kids running to get to school. I'm out there every single morning at Pacific Sky and it's thrilling to see how happy the kids are to be there and the teachers too. So I want you to know that Delmar is a very special place and we're grateful to be in such a collaborative and cooperative and visionary district. And that is from the heart of all of our teachers. It's not just one perspective. That is truly how we feel. So please hear that because we see the work that you're all doing to support us. Our teachers are proud to be a part of this district because the work that we're doing is so important. It's definitely rigorous, but also inventive. We are breaking the ground every day. We're proud of our students for their questions, for their conversations, and for their eagerness to do their very best. We know that when you're here in these board meetings, because I've been here to see it, you're asking good questions and it isn't just business issue. Everybody is really intentional. The decisions around professional development to help enhance our expertise, the decisions around providing extra counseling support for students, even the decisions around providing nutrition that the children want to eat at lunch are supporting our kids and supporting what we are doing in classrooms. So thank you for keeping our kids healthy. Thank you for supporting teachers. And then I also want to say thank you right now for recognizing teachers every month and acknowledging the hard work that we're doing. I really feel that we are working side by side and the teachers are saying that we really feel and see the partnership every single day. We're excited to be here. And then on a personal note, I just want to give you my perspective being newer Pacific Sky. I see the rigorous expectations in the innovation technology role and in our student plus environments. I see the agency that kids are developing as they're selecting their own tools, going to the decentralized library and selecting their own books, their partnerships, and here they're choosing to do their best thinking. I'm really proud of our kids and DMCTA is really proud of our teachers and we're proud to be a part of the district. So we are off to a fantastic start for 2023, 2024. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Monica. 5.3 I'm not sure we'll wrap this here. Thank you. On... Let's do 5.4. Record report. For board members, let's start with you, Colby.
Okay, so I agree it is a joyful time as we start the school year. And in that spirit, I have been spending a lot of time with PTA presidents and members. I was able to attend the superintendent, the PTA president's meeting, or I was able to interact with all of the presidents and have a roundtable of discussion of what's top of mind for parents and the parent community. I also was able to attend three PTA events and meet even more families at Sage Canyon and Carmel Delmar and Sycamore Ridge. And then the other highlight was the DMSCF board meeting, the foundation board meeting. Not only did I get to learn where they were with their fundraising, but also got to be the... Helping a board member to receive questions and hear concerns from that perspective as well. The other part of mine, not since the last meeting, is it was the first of my orientation sessions as a new board member. Polly's been nice enough to schedule time with each of the cabinet members. We started with Jenny and Student Services to learn about the large portfolio of topics with a big focus on special education, which is very important to me. So I appreciate the time and the open dialogue and the ongoing dialogue. I also spent time with individual parents and community members. So in addition to going to PTA meetings or events, I've had a chance to reach out and have one-on-one conversations with parents. And so we've been able to have some really good dialogue on issues like the No Place or Hate programs in our schools, their effectiveness, and what we need to do to make them robust. We also spoke about initiatives to support special education families. So special education families has been a big priority for me when I started on board. And I'm looking for ways in partnership with Polly, Jenny, and the staff, as well as the special education families to have an improved dialogue and find ways to improve that as well. Because we all do better when we're supporting families, especially families that are new to the process because it's not easy and I know that from personal experience. And finally, I've had an opportunity to talk about funding for student plus programs. You know, it comes up, the questions come up, you know, very similar questions every year when we're doing the fundraising for the foundation. You know, where's my money going? You're asking for a lot of money and how is it going to support the program? And we've been working with WIL and the foundation board staff to get really crisp answers on that because before a new parent wants to donate to the foundation, they need to be clear that it's going to be going to a specific program specifically for their children. And I think we're overcoming, making sure that we're messaging that power. And finally, in that same spirit, I would recommend everybody to contribute to the foundation as I have done, as well as the PTAs. Both foundations and PTAs are all in their fundraising season right now. And so I just want to encourage anybody who's here listening or on a video to make sure that they support the good work that the PTAs are doing, as well as the foundation.
I always find it interesting to sit here in September and then think how quickly it's today because the year goes by so quickly. It's pretty amazing. And as we sit here in the beginning of the year and having here, that everything seems to be running smoothly. I am sat here in Delmar on campus feeling a little insecure apparently because of some of the comments that were made of encourage reaching out or at least restructuring or making sure it's structured properly. The No Place or Hate initiative that we have on our campuses can make sure that those are an important part of the building of the school. I did go to a meeting that was run by the Voice of San Diego where they were talking to kids and parents who were looking to move into elementary schools. And it listed all of the schools in San Diego County and the ratings that they had. And I'm happy to say that our district ranks pretty highly in that as a whole thing. Unfortunately, they didn't list Pacific Sky in your book or your act. It's what they told me was that it was too early, there was no word of that. And I said, yeah, but they still exist and so we should listen. It was interesting to see some of the scores that other districts had. Maybe this is the largest one, it's maybe high above Delmar's as well. As to what Alan was talking about in terms of getting up to speed, I would recommend to him that we pursue the methods of governance that CSBA offers because I am an invaluable resource and I would recommend it. So, all kinds here.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out today.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have a whole lot to report, I just did want to say though that, as I suggested, that I think this district is absolutely one of the finest districts in California. I'm asking by every person here, and especially the teachers, who are absolutely wonderful. And I do think that the needs of whatever I think when my child are specifics, my name, my child, is not necessarily something to discuss. Oh, but I'm happy to talk with you, which is thoughtful. But again, I have the most baked up system of things. Thank you. And 5.5, the superintendent.
Thank you. So I did this past month, or since the last time we met, attend the SLUT teachers, which was the San Diego County Office of Education, along with PCE, etc. Actually, recognize all coming teachers of the year. And we have a special congratulations to our DMUSD site teachers. And Chinsia Fisher is our district teacher of the year. She is outstanding, talking about some of the outstanding people who work here. Absolutely among the finest of educators you will ever meet is Ms. Fisher. And such a delight to be able to recognize her work. She is a leader in all disciplines. And I will tell you, she knows more about teaching mathematics to students in... She happens to be sixth grader right now, than probably anyone I've ever met. And she is also the... One of the strengths of our teacher group is that our teachers in this district is they share their expertise with one another. So they are better because of working together and it's something I'm really proud of. And she definitely represents the best of the best in our... And she definitely represents the best of the best in our district, and we just, I work with fine teachers throughout this entire district. I also had a chance to attend the PTA presidents meeting that board member Melissa talked about. We have a great group of presidents working to do wonderful things to support the experience of our schools. So, it's nice to meet them once a month, and again, appreciate the work of the foundation president. I do want to share a little bit with you about what has been noticed over the last month. I had a chance to see firsthand what happens in our classrooms. And I do realize that most parents, most members of the community don't get to see that firsthand, and I get to see it a lot. And there are a couple of things that stand out here that I will tell you. When they talk about, the Voice of St. Anne, was it Doug? When they talk about, you know, schools and school districts that are highly ranked, one of the things that puts us in a category of superior is our true focus on two instructional frameworks that bring the level of teaching and our learning to a very, very high quality. We have the essential elements of instruction and creating cultures of thinking. And how we ground our decision-making in that, and this experience is engaging for students, is really unique and very, very exceptional. Our teachers have expertise that is remarkable. I watch them teach, I watch our kids learn, and it's with precision based on research-based strategies, those essential elements of instruction, and what are the components of helping kids understand that our teachers have such a grasp on. So, thank you to this board for supporting all that we put into the expertise of our teachers. I would say the second thing that stands out is with how our educators and everyone in this district really is committed to looking at the experience through the eyes of our kids. If we look back through decades, teaching and learning has really been very teacher-centric, where we think about an authority figure that's imparting knowledge and imparting what the whole of the kids need to know. But we really are creating cultures of thinking. It does change the role of the teacher, and it changes the role of the student dramatically. So, they own their learning, they're engaged in meaningful ways, and it's very purposeful. When you tie that into standards and research-based practice. And that's why I appreciate your comments from the board, because it really is exceptional here. And I have a chance to see it firsthand in a very, very valid of the educators that we employ in our district. Fortunately, Brian Stanley leads the work in HR to continue to attract the best, and we do. We have many, many people who apply to work here, and we are fortunate to be able to hire and obviously retain the best, because we have some excellent people who have started here this year and who have worked here for years and years. And I very much appreciate the comments from Monica, Susan this evening. And you too, Monica, get to see firsthand what happens at our school sites in classrooms. And we appreciate all of the heart of our teachers. Very proud, very, very proud to work alongside you. That concludes my report.
Five point six, wrote me, "Public hearings review sufficiency of instructional materials for the 2023-2024 school year." As required by Education Quote Section 60119. This is public hearings intended for the purpose of hearing from the public prior to the consideration of possible adoption of Resolution Number 202215 by the Board Trustees of Delmar Union School District regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials for the 2023-2024 school year. Written notice was given in accordance with Education Quote 60119, another applicable law that following public hearing be held before the Board Trustees of Delmar Union School District for the sufficiency of instructional materials for the 2023-24 school year. Public hearing is open at 6:06. Is there any public input? Is there any resolutions, number 202315? Is not. Five point seven, for approval Resolution Number 202315 regarding sufficiency of instructional materials for the 2023-24 school year as required by Education Quote Section 60119. Resolution 202315 is presented this evening with fourth approval. Approval of this resolution allows this district to secure effective government stability. Resolution 202315 incorporates additional language specified in the bullying settlement of 2004, which specifically advised curriculum framework tests. Various subject areas require school districts to confirm sufficiency of materials in these subject areas. Resolution Number 202315 has passed review. Motion, the motion has passed. So, motion to adopt Resolution Number 202315 regarding sufficiency of instructional materials for the 2023-24 school year as required by Education Quote Section 60119. Is there a motion to approve that Resolution 202315? All those are vader?
Aye.
Motion to approve Resolution 202315 passes. Hearing is closed at 6:28 PM. Five point eight, public hearing for information approval of open to the public hearing for the submission of the initial proposals for the reopeners of 2023-24 DMUSD and DMCC labor agreement. Conferenceary Government Code Article 8, Section 53547 stipulates at a reasonable time to last after the submission of the initial proposal for the public to have the opportunity to comment. Public hearing speaker, hearing is open at 6:28 PM. There are any public comments? Public comments, public hearing will be closed at the opt over regular hearing order. Five point nine, hearing of the public regarding agenda items. Anyone likes to address a gathering board on particular agenda item, your speaker slipped, we can turn it in this time. Recognize and call the podium when your requested agenda item pops up. Please address the gathering board. Five ten, for approval, is for the August 23, August, I'm sorry, August 23, 2023, Special Meeting, and the August 23, August 23, 2023, regular. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Eight. Is there a second? Great. All those are vader?
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes for August 23, 2023, Special Meeting, and regular reading passes. Number eight, Senator. Six one over six point one. Is there any one that maybe wants to pull out to have a further discussion on?
Yes, I'd like to call six point four.
Six point four?
Six point nine, six point twelve, six point thirteen, six point sixteen.
So, four, nine, twelve, thirteen, sixteen. And are there any questions or anything regarding the other ones, or questions or anything?
I just want to say thank you to the staff. I was able to review consent items, and I, as a new board member, usually have a lot of questions. And I appreciate you responding promptly so that I could be informed and support the approval.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda minus six, four, six, nine, six, twelve, six, thirteen, and six, sixteen?
Can you speak up for the board?
Yeah, sure.
Do we want to discuss those and see if perhaps we can clarify the issues and put them back up in consent?
Sure. Is it something that you want to discuss in detail, Catherine, or is it something that is like a quick question thing?
I don't know. I can't. I can't. I think it's sort of how long it will take.
So, are we suggesting pulling them, and they're not going to be voted on tonight at all?
No, they'll be voted, I mean, I'll just go back to them. We'll just go. I'll just vote for the, we'll go for the first.
So, we're going to have a discussion on the venue, we might as well do it down?
I think it's just maybe cleaner if we just kind of go first through. And so, I mean, is there a motion to the new concession, a minus of four, nine, twelve, fifteen, sixteen? So, six, seven, all of them vader?
Aye.
Motion passes. So, start at six, four.
Okay. So, I did ask you earlier today, Monica, just to clarify about some expenses regarding mileage reimbursement, and you did get back to me. I'm just wondering, are those mileage reimbursements every month, or how was the frequency of them? Chris, would you like to?
So, the mileage reimbursements are typically done monthly. And unless, for some reason, somebody doesn't accrue any mileage, but the ones that were on the purchase order list under six point three were for open purchase orders, because those people do end up driving as part of their job throughout the year. And so, rather than doing an individual PO every month for that person, we know that there are parts of their job that they'll be putting in a mileage. So, we put in an amount that should be around what they will cover, and then we'll bill off that PO as they accrue mileage on a monthly basis.
But during the year, the amount that we anticipate?
Yes.
Okay, so, if I'm understanding you, the amount is the annual accrual, or it's on the monthly?
Correct. So, it's like a 23, 24, we expect it wouldn't exceed this amount. And then each month, they submit their mileage, and they get the federally approved mileage reimbursement for the driving they're doing within their job.
Got it. Okay. And then, I mean, there's just a lot on here with regard to meeting expenses, but, you know, it's a lot of like rest, like local restaurants. It just kind of like all adds up, and traveling conferences too.
Are you referring to six, four, or?
Six, four. Yeah, and one of them are just card transactions. And also on the other one, the, what's it called, the purchase purchase order was, yeah, like, I don't know, like the six thousand dollars of pay or, like, is that for the month, or is that? Because it's just listed on here, so I'm assuming it's just for the month.
So, I believe that this is under six, three, and the purchase card list, not the purchase orders.
The six point four.
Six four is actually.
I was going to hit a draft agenda, sorry.
No problem.
Sorry.
And then I just, to clarify, is it, which, I just want to make sure I'm on the right list, which I don't.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It is six point three, because I was going off the draft agenda.
So, then, I'm trying, so is it under the purchase card list or the purchase order list?
Well, I mean.
So, if it's a general question.
Pancakes and the Panera, like, it's on there, they're on both lists.
So, as a general question, I can say that these, at the beginning of the year, we have had our welcome back. We've had a number of meetings that are longer meetings that include the time when we also are meeting staff, because we have them in for the whole morning for the welcome back. We have them working through lunch for some of the site-based meetings. So, you will see more of those on this first August expenditures, because they come in as part of that, all of the events and the items that go on at the beginning of the school year. So, when you see them as meeting supplies, it's because it is tied to a meeting that is being held.
It's like thousands of dollars. And so, like, my point of this is, we say we don't have enough funds. There are these programs that are essential for children in the state of California, we shouldn't buy pancakes. That's my point. So, I don't approve these.
Six point three, do you want to approve?
Yes, apparently I have said.
Would you suggest?
It's other than.
So, is there a motion on six, four? Motion versus. Second, versus six, four.
I just want to clarify, I just think that, you know, Catherine had replaced the numbers, and I think the intent here is.
Yeah, I think my other numbers are off as well.
Is this to ask the question about, you know, what's our practice for that type of expense? I think it's a, I think it's a good question, it's a good thought, dialogue. And, you know, if we want to, you know, separately go back and vote on that, so it's three, one versus four, zero, if that's Catherine, if that's what we'd like to say. But I think, I appreciate Catherine, I think you made a big point. And so, they could watch, I don't know, they'll maybe go back and approve or reapprove.
That's not what I'm wondering.
Yeah, there's just, I think that was one item. There's also all these conferences, especially mine. I had said six point one, two, but it's, it's six point one, one on this agenda. I would like to re-vote on that one.
Can I just interject something? I think we're fine, we've got this funny TK. And if that's true, I think we've already discussed that there's a way to do that, there's a way to get there. We've all agreed that we're going to do that, the issue was that we want to come off too soon without planning any plans. So, I think we've all decided that TK is something that's going to happen in this year. We all agree that it should happen in this year. And it's getting to the point where I want to tell my staff, administration, people that know education better than you, that they can or cannot vote on the seven mark or something that's going to make them better administrator or teacher or whatever it is. That's not my place to do that, as a board member, and to admit, hey, somebody can't have a sandwich at a meeting, they're there all day, is just getting too far into the weeds.
That's your opinion, and you have a vote?
I'm just saying, it's, you're right, I have a vote.
As to why?
And you're entitled to that.
I know, so let's move forward.
Well, you can say your piece, I'm going to tell the same one. And I have, just wanted to be a little bit over, just to say, you can't have sandwiches at a meeting.
No, they, no, they. So, if it is possible, six point one, one is particularly concerning. Six point one, two, six point eight.
Is there a way that we can re-vote on the whole thing, like, is that something that you seem to have to be more? Because I mean, I think that, I think that the understanding intent here is that the numbers were messed up. So, I would propose that we just re, have, after, pick out the numbers, actually, the correct ones. And then let's redo the voting.
And maybe what we could do is, okay, I think Catherine gets some additional comments. But if we get through all of that, once we're finished, I think we'll come back and clean up what we want to vote on or re-vote on.
Yeah. Have there additional?
Yes, so, the attendance at the conferences, six point eight, six point eleven, six point twelve.
So, these are all brought forward as part of our district, obviously, work in order to make the vision and mission and priorities that go forward in the district actually happen. And we are very intentional about our own meticulous learning and growth, and this is part of that.
Right, and I ask for, like us, we've done in other districts, to have more like a light items specification within these, instead of other items, like, relates to attending the conferences that I don't see that here.
It includes a CD.
It's like a dollar amount, but it doesn't include how much that conference fees are, travel expense, all the expense.
The dollar amount is all the things that we're talking about.
Right, but it includes everything that's mentioned. Right. I think it's important to know what the attendance of the conferences, like, just the conferences we have done, and then what are all the show expenses associated with it. That's what I asked for, virtual. I'm ready to vote, if we're able to.
Are you, so, those are all your comments?
Those are my comments, yeah.
Do you want, do you need those numbers again?
Yes. Six point thirty, six point eight, six point eleven.
And six point twelve?
Six point twelve and six point sixteen, I'm sorry, there's six point sixteen as well. So, I'm just concerned as our district enrollment has declined, that we're hiring more district office personnel. It's concerning to me. I don't understand it.
So, this particular position is a needed position, and Mr. Stanley, would you talk a little bit about this position? And I just brought forward this time, this drop description. And then I just brought forward this time, this job description.
Yes, the position that we're moving forward, so the existing position is currently supporting both the district office and student services. And in effect, or in practice, this position is paid for by seventy percent within student services. What's happening is that the needs of the student services department is not receiving the benefit of the person who is on our payroll to be able to help us pay, support the student services department. So we've needed to locate that person up in our student services department where she could support the work within that department. And so that then has been, has created a vacancy at our front desk. And so on the days that the student services person is up at the department supporting the work at the student services, what that has done is that has created a need to either bring in a substitute to fill the role of the front desk or to, there have been other days that we've had a bell for a member of the public, they were to come in, they would ring a bell, and then someone from another department would come in and answer it. So the reason that we're bringing it forward for for approval is, we recognize what an important position that is, the the front desk is the first person that members of our public see, it's the face of our district. It's that first interaction to be able to help register a child or ask for information within the district. And so from, for us, we know it's really important, in addition to the safety and having somebody there to see visitors. So for us, we really think it's important to be able to have that friendly presence to build in our community when they come to the front desk.
Okay, so um, how long has this been a need?
It actually.
How long has this need been growing?
It actually has been growing for quite some time, in truth, we we've tried to be fiscally conservative by actually trying to move along before we even brought this need forward to the board. We've been trying to have other departments come down and help support the desk and cover at this point in time, but at this point, it's just not feasible. And again, as we're looking at within our student services department, just, you know, Alan, you were mentioning earlier, you said that there's a, when you met, talking about that large portfolio of topics within student services. And so we've, but we've tried to have that person located down at the front desk and supporting, and it's just, it's, it's not meeting the needs of the department.
Okay, I guess I'm still stuck with with our growing, like declining, sorry, our the the enrollment that's um, going increasingly down. We've got more student services needs, and that's why like the disconnect is, what are the needs specifically?
It really is supporting that administrative, secretarial, clerical work to help support within those departments. As within our student services board, not only with the umbrella within student services, but also within special education, which requires a high volume of finding, responding, uh, supporting, supporting uh, matters that have legal deadlines and timelines. And so up within that department, we currently have one person who is supporting five uh, district staff in that department. And again, the other person who is scheduled to be able to support that department, but like, in practice, because she's at the front desk, the needs of of the front desk are such that she's not able to provide that additional clerical administrative support within that department.
And what would be the cost for this position?
One of the things to try and, again, in mind of being fiscally responsible is, we actually re were presenting this position at a lower classification than it currently was. So you'll see on the job description previously, it was classified as the administrator assistant, which is paid on our classified salary schedule at a range twenty-six. This one comes in at a lower classification at a range twenty-one.
What's the total cost?
It it comes up the hourly range for that, for twenty-one, it starts at twenty-one dollars and eighty-one cents, and then depending on how many years of experience they have, as we look at what step, it would go up, depending on their qualifications, it would go up, the top of the range would be thirty dollars and sixty-one cents range.
Could you give me a total annual salary?
I believe, Catherine, it's about forty-five thousand dollars up to midpoint around fifty or sixty, but I would have to absolutely confirm that.
Okay, and then just, you know, to your point, I think the same sentiment was expressed when we talked about adding a full-day kindergarten program on. I think though, I don't think you were, you were not a part of that discussion, but it was kind of all agreed, not formally, that that was, this was the first session a long, long time ago. When it was first brought up, that, oh yeah, that's a great direction to move towards, and it didn't happen. Even though parents wanted it to happen by their vote, it hasn't happened. So I'm not gonna say, oh yeah, we got T K, it's it's done. Um, I'm looking for ways that we can fund TK because we say we, for many years now, we say we haven't been able to. And these are all amounts of money that when added up, could help fund TK.
Is it, was it a risk of the damage you wrestle?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's a risk. I don't think there's any confidence to learn about furniture for ten thousand dollars is going to put us at any risk academically.
Okay, can I, so, I just clarify, Brian, that this basic position is having someone staffing the front desk at all times, basically, while the office is open.
That's correct, this would, this position, they would be housed at the front desk at all times.
Okay, so, thank you, um, so, I have the numbers, uh, how about we go back, uh, put out, so procedurally, yeah.
I just got my materials.
Yeah.
Well, I would suggest we do is we reconsider those.
Okay, so that brings it back on the table.
We amend the motion and specify those uh, four, five points, the extent, Captain Mike, those excluded from the consent. And we could vote on every remaining test consent, unless Catherine you want to put any of those back on the consent. If your intentions is to vote against them, then I would say, what we'll do is we reconsider both the motion, we amend the motion to specify those five to be excluded, vote on it, and then we can vote on the other five separately. And we can see the motion, we can, we can vote on those. Well, we got the numbers wrong, okay.
So.
Do we need a motion for your?
Yeah, do we need a?
So, I move that we reconsider the vote on the consent motion and amend it. So it reads, motion to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of item six-point-three, six-point-eight, six-point-eleven, six-point-twelve, and six-point-sixteen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And now, let's give another motion.
So it might be better to group them, we believe this would be the same outcome. Would you like to do that? So the motion would be for approving five items from the consent agenda, including six-point-three, six-point-eight, six-point-eleven, six-point-twelve, and six-point-sixteen.
Sorry.
As a, so it's, it's, we're looking at the five, those five consent items together.
So, are you, he did make a motion, those five, are you moving, are you moving to approve those?
Five, five, six-three, okay. As a group.
And then you're second.
Oh, I thought you were voting to to vote on that.
Yeah, you vote, right, on those five. Are you moving to vote on them?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I guess, I was just gonna say, what I'm just gonna do, approve them.
Because she seconded you.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, so motion's on, okay. So, uh, all those in favor of moving to vote on those five items?
Aye, aye.
We're not moving to approve that, we're moving to vote on.
We're just moving to vote on them, yeah. Okay, now, is there a motion to approve those items?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those vote?
No.
Motion passes three-one. Okay. Administration, eight-point-one, for for cybersecurity, you know, taking a quick step on that.
Hi, everybody, so, good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent, Clerk, Cabinet, tonight I'll provide you with cybersecurity update. The presentation will be twofold, what's in place, and next steps. This is the mindset guiding our decisions, balancing safety, but at the same time, not disrupting student learning and instruction. These are the five security measures prioritized by the Technology Department, the San Diego County Office of Education, and the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency. And so it's the decision-making behind these measures. I would like to add that we are fortunate to be in San Diego because their County Office of Education has an excellent reputation in this area. And their CTO spoke about cybersecurity last month at the White House. The first measure is multi-factor authorization, MFA. I like to preface this slide with the following information. According to figures cited by the U.S. National Security Cyber Chief, MFA can help prevent eighty to ninety percent of cyber attacks. Here's what we have in place. As you recall, we implemented Microsoft MFA last spring. This is crucial because it protects our email system. MFA was enabled for Google administrators during the summer. And it was turned on for Synergy Student Information System administrators in June. Patch management is the next measure. We are fixing known security flaws by applying updates to protect against vulnerabilities. Patch management is done via JAM for Macintosh and Apple devices, and engine for Windows machines. Some are automatically applied, others, like an operating system update, allow the end user a specified amount of time. And I want you to, um, take a look at the slide here. And here's an image of a Mac OS update. The end user has the option to upgrade now or at a later time, this ensures that instruction is not interrupted. Managing use of privileges is guided by the principle of least privilege. Which works by granting end users the minimum levels of permissions needed to perform their jobs. For Mac OS and Windows, end users do not have administrator privileges, privileges, excuse me. This prevents unauthorized installation of malicious software or updates. On the Google and Microsoft side, only technology staff have administrator access, and they are using MFA. Also, admin permissions match their roles. We have a small number of Synergy Student Information System administrators, and MFA is turned on for them. Microsoft Defender is our enterprise defense suite, it was fully deployed in twenty-twenty-two. We install Extended Detection and Response, XDR, on all computers. XDR leverages artificial intelligence to automatically stop attacks and remediate affected assets into a safe state. It also monitors common threat indicators. On the next slides, I will share three action items to further secure our environment. Cybersecurity awareness is an area that we would like to further implement. We sent safety emails and flyers last year, and cybersecurity guidelines are posted on the staff portal. We are exploring our JPA offerings for an annual employee cybersecurity training. And we will, and we will be rolling out Red Heron that will train employees on identifying malicious email messages. We will begin with leadership, so watch out, and later district-wide. The next step is multi-factor authentication. The plan is to implement Google MFA for all employees winter twenty-twenty-three, and Synergy Student Information System, MFA, for all end users spring twenty-twenty-four. The final step is a network audit, and we are implementing two of them. The first one is a risk audit that will be performed by accompanying a managed methods. This audit will help us identify and prevent unsafe use of sensitive data. The second audit will be a vulnerability scan done by the San Diego County Office of Education. It will help identify and analyze any network threats. I have experience with both audits in my previous district, and they are a crucial component in securing the environment there. The plan is to have them done by the end of the year. Before we end, I would like you to know that the Technology Department is committed to securing our environment, and cybersecurity is essential to protecting our digital assets. I would like to acknowledge Kirk Finney and Jim Ellis, who worked on the presentation, and the entire Technology Department for making cybersecurity a priority. And a shout out to Chris Delaunay, who's been very supportive of our efforts. Thank you for allowing me to present tonight. At this time, I will open it up for comments or questions. Thank you, Sam.
You're welcome.
Sure, thanks for the presentation. So today I became aware of two publicized ransomware attacks, one was Caesars in Las Vegas, they had a lot of money, another was a company in my building, and it's very disruptive. My question is, are districts, are school districts being targeted with ransomware attacks? And do we have a a plan or a protocol, should that happen, as if all these great protections you put in place, uh, don't uh, stop it? Uh, do we have a protocol or a plan to deal with that?
So if we actually, we don't have a formal plan, but if we actually were, um, victim of a ransomware attack, we can stop and then, the majority, I mean, nine-nine percent of data is in the cloud. You would be able to restore from a point in time in the cloud from our third parties.
Any other portion that's not in the cloud, is it something that you worry about, of course?
I think we all do it in in IT. It's just, it's it's something that's been ongoing since I've been, this is my year, being in technology, and I know with my peers, um, in three different counties, um, it's it's been ongoing discussion. Um, this Friday, I'm going with my, um, association meeting for IT professionals, and the full two hours for our first session of the year about cybersecurity. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Sam, uh, I think, I'm assuming this presentation is going to be part of my, uh, discussion about it earlier, because I mean, we went to a, uh, the, the Senate, the Valley Assembly. And I mean, one of the main discussions we talked was about cybersecurity and how numerous school districts have been subjected ransomware attacks, and that's how, why I brought this up in the first place. And and I think one of the just takeaways that happened there was that it always suggested it have some sort of, like, it's basically, it's kind of, not a the it will happen, but kind of when it will happen, so it sounds like everybody, it's hit at some point, and basically want to be fair for it. And it sounds like, so it's, I understand the concern of others.
Of course.
I have a question related to our students, so very easy personal devices issued by the district within the posture, what safeguards are placed for that?
Not personal devices, they're used in district devices.
Yeah.
Provided devices?
That, correct.
Yeah, so we actually, we have, in order for us to actually get federal funding, we have to actually have filters in place for them, so we actually have a, we have two filters, we have a main filter for every device in the actual district. And then we also have another filter in place called ICV that is filtering all, uh, web activity for our students.
They're, is they, is they care when they're on those devices?
Yes, they are.
Very comfortable with that?
I am, especially because it's all, they, like, we're all on the cloud based, they're not using computers, they're actually using, um, other websites.
So they're not exactly on the internet, they're on, are they?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they are going out to the internet, but they're, you know, have to get out to their, their net. Yeah, so all districts have to be out to the internet, we, you know, we have, we have a, um, we have, we have a, a pipe to get out to the internet, that's, you know, you use a public company to get out to the internet. But we have filters in place.
Okay.
Yeah, and so.
Keep away from that, guys.
For sure, for sure, yeah, and honestly, um, filters, like standard, you know, just out, they actually have, they're all working, you know, um, in identifying which, which countries are blocked, just by default, but I gather, once again, they're always, like, fraud, there's incentive for our. there's incentives for our filtering companies to make sure their controls are in place. Because like you always mentioned, you're, you're victim of ransomware. All, who is your company that you use without this happening? It's not, it's in their messages as well to make our environment safe. So, you know, we're working on our side internally. We're also doing it on our end to make sure this, this isn't happening. You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Sam. I think, yeah, a lot of it was just there, it wouldn't have been for suggesting us to do the basic, the simple things. And I think I thought a lot of thanks for definitely holding back your conversations and like that. And so it sounds like you're on the track. So thanks so much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
And we are nine point one, board floor facilities updates.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent the Clerk, Cabinet. It's an honor to present to you these release of eight for September. We'll be going over the Delmar Heights Academy modernization project, the Delmar Heights School Rebuild and the Sage Canyon 400 building improvement project. Delmar Heights Academy, we continue with the investigating the basic options for the project. We are currently in the construction development phase and anticipate to be able to submit for DSA approval and be out of DSA by February of 2024. And that will allow us to drop to bid and start construction of the Delmar Heights Modernization Project by the summer of 2024. With the Delmar Heights School Rebuild project, currently are up to seventy, seventy and eighty-five workers on site daily, and it will continue to increase as we move along with the project and more and more areas are completed, such as the interior of the building, get more electrical, the voltage, and then outside, the landscaping as well. As of today, all of the slab upgrade has been completed for all of the buildings. We continue with the framing, the interior framing and the wood framing of the building C of the project. Next, it's continued, continue with the structural steel for building C of the project. And I'll start with you some of the current project pictures. Here's some of the aerial photo and where we're at with the project as of today. You can see the classrooms that are, you know, cranked up, plywooded up, getting ready to start some of the waterproofing for, you know, the, the next winter, winter break coming up. And then on the right picture, you see that's building A, that's the concrete slab being grinded and being cracked, and eventually we'll have the flooring material fitting. Then moving on to the Sage 400 building improvements that we did. As you, as you know, we had to move out the classrooms that were being housed and that we started building with the elevated moisture levels that we were getting back. And then with some investigating with Beam and Western Environmental Services, we went ahead and did some of these improvements that I'll be sharing. We not only did improvements to the exterior of the building, we did improvements inside the classrooms as well. We installed a new roof, new carpet in all the classrooms and the indoor hallway that really opened up that space to be able to utilize it more, you know, flexibility to the classrooms and within the hallway on the first floor. Painted all the classrooms, we installed new AC units on the lower level, the hallway and the classrooms. And then we did some exterior waterproofing to the building. We did new stucco week street at the bottom of the, the building. We did lacing on the windows and the doors. And then we installed a waterproof membrane on a soffit on the backside of the building to continue to ensure that it's waterproof and minimize the moisture levels that we were getting. And here are some of the project photos that we did. See up there, we've got the brand new roof, maintained and fully compliant. That middle picture, one of the early investigated projects that we did, we cut out two by two squares and to make sure that the stucco, they did tests in the stucco, they tested on plywood, making sure that there was no extreme water intrusion that was happening. And luckily, they, it was pretty dry, it was dry actually. You can still see the chalk line of when the building was constructed twenty years ago. On the right side, that's the week street that I mentioned, where we cut out about four inches from the, from the floor up and then installed new week street to allow the water to seep out that it gets from the new stucco. And then picture on the left is just a new ducky that was installed in all of the classrooms downstairs. You can see some of the crane that's putting the AC units up on the roof. There's the interior hallway of the first floor, see brand new carpet. Like I said, it really opened up that space. And then that picture on the right, just that middle section shows that soffit that is really hard to tell because it's a, it was a really thin, like twenty-four inch wide opening where we had to install the waterproofing membrane within that, that space. And one of the next steps that we, we plan on doing for the summer of 2024 is painting the exterior of that building with elastomeric paint that will again ensure that it maintains its waterproofing. And that's a recommendation that came from Beam, one of our consultants that helped us with, you know, determine the cause and the root of the moisture intrusion of the building. And we're back, hold it up to questions.
Thank you, Carlos. Same question. Alex.
So for Delmar Heights, I'm looking forward to the visit on October fourth to learn more about the project and the progress being made. Any surprises with the presentation from last month creeping into the project or slowing anything down? The Heights project?
Yes.
No. We did have, obviously, some natural water, but the contractor, they leave, got the pumping trucks in there, we pump water out, and to dry up the, the space, the last month, I presented where we were doing the last slab upgrade. And we were to complete that first month of project on schedule.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So with the, with respect to the Sage Canyon issue, did we ever resolve that how moisture goes in there? I think there was discussion about it. Are they comfortable with that it's taken care of? Like, it's a situation that should be resolved at this point?
Yes, and we continue to monitor and test on a weekly basis, and luckily, the, the results have been favorable. We do have, we are using that space. We've got third grade in there and then utilizing it for other programs on that school set. The first and second.
How are you monitoring?
So we have these data loggers that are tracking the moisture level, the temperature. It gets a reading like every fifteen seconds. And then on every Wednesday, we have a company that comes in, Western Environmental Services, that comes in and does actual air quality tests. And then on Friday, we get the report, and then we share that back with the Sage Canyon staff.
Can you tell me like what, refresh memory, like what the issue was? This moisture was going in, like, maybe it was like week street or something?
They, we were getting elevated moisture levels when we were doing these air quality tests. So they test the, the temperature, the moisture. We want to remain around under sixty percent, and we were getting, you know, between sixty-five and eighty percent humidity levels. And that's when we brought in Beam, did some of the investigative work, and determined that, you know, they had some areas where waterproofing was not installed when they structured the building over twenty years ago, and that since has been corrected.
I see. So, so with waterproofing, new HVAC system, that is pretty much the, the solution that should be, is the resolved issue?
Yes, yeah, we haven't had any major increase in humidity levels like we had a year ago.
Okay, so monitoring has been, the, the numbers have been good.
Yep.
Oh, fantastic. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
One question about the elastomeric paint.
Yes.
Western Environmental is included in that consideration because I noted that when you put elastomeric paint in a moist area, it becomes a terrarium because it keeps the moisture in. We certainly don't want that to happen. So I just want to make sure that the environmental consultant is involved in that decision making.
They are, and it was our recommendation through Beam, and we are working hand in hand with Western Environmental on all of these projects that we did and were presented to us through Beam.
Okay, great.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Number one, board review and approval of the 2022, 2023 un-audited actuals for all district funds with the President and the Department.
Good evening, President Mock, members of the Board, Captain Clerk. This evening, we are here to present the un-audited actuals, which are the actuals from the 2022, 2023 budget year. And so over the course of this evening, we'll share a general fund summary, some historical data, and then we'll look towards the 2023, 2024 first interim, and then give you a summary of all of our other funds. So I will ask your partners to start off their general.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening, President Mock, members of the Board, Captain Clerk. As Chris mentioned, we will be reporting on the 2022, 2023 un-audited actuals. And in May, we brought forward the estimated actuals, which the Board approved at that time. So this is the difference between the estimated actuals and our un-audited actuals for 2022, 2023. For general fund revenues, estimated actuals, we had seventy-four million reported and closed un-audited actuals for 2022, 2023 at seventy-six point six million with a difference of two million. And the variance from those differences, that two million dollar difference in revenue, are the adjustments, first years off the half, which is offset in expenditures. So we'll talk about that when we get to expenditure side. There's an entry for revenue as well as expenses. Also, we had accounting adjustments to record our fair market value patch and our cash and accounting treasury also has to go through an investment process, and so we record the fair market value for those. And we also had an increase to other state revenues for arts, music instructional materials block grant. We remember that we, at the May revise, Governor's May revise, we had a reduction of about fifty percent anticipated for the arts and music block grant, which then was increased. So there's a revenue increase there. And then we also had an increase to our local revenues for technology device buybacks and also in grade three program. So we sold off our also used technology devices to increase our local revenue. And then for the expenditure side, estimated actuals, we recorded seventy-three point six million. And for un-audited actuals that we're recording today is seventy-eight million with a decrease, the difference being a decrease of six million. And the variance there are due to adjustments for our final salary benefits, including the first on the half, as I mentioned, during revenue, which is offset in revenue, in addition to the child nutrition program contribution and school site and district in period of four twenty-three. And then as we look at the components of the any fund balance, similar to how we did estimated actuals or un-audited actuals, the components include the revolving cash of twenty-five thousand, our restricted amount of five point four million, and the digital storage capacity for two hundred and fifty thousand, and our minimum reserve, fifteen percent, is a little bit million. And that's bringing our unrestricted general fund reserve to seventeen point nine, which is twenty-four point three percent of that restricted percentage. The reserve is there for significant future needs, such as economic and certain needs for a community friendly district like ourselves, as well as unanticipated expenditures for facility repairs and any emergent items related to facilities. In addition to that, we look to various curriculum adoptions. They, for example, the social science and health options. Social science is adopted in the 2023, 2024, so. And this is just a chart of those revenues that we discussed, breaking out all of the different sources there, from LCF sources, all of the government, IR, DM, SC, AD, foundation, contribution. And then similarly, for the expenditure side, the expenditure summary. And as you know, we're in people business. So the total net salary and benefits, the total is eighty-three point four percent of our total expenditures are related to our staff employees. Additional general fund highlights include our OPEB trust contribution. Several years ago, the Board was steadfast in implementing that trust contribution to help us be able to navigate in the event of the OPEB liabilities. So these are our post-deployment benefit. So we contribute that hundred thousand on an annual basis. We also have the transfer to Fund 14 deferred maintenance, which was at one person, and a transfer to Fund 17 special reserve for Pacific Sky School operating class and opening at the Central Kitchen, which opened in twenty-two, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-three, twenty-four. And then our class size reduction, we're dedicated to the class size reduction grade for three, six, to ensure that our class sizes are at a full grade. Special education funding remains to be underfunded, and so annually, we have a general fund contribution. For 2022, 23, our contribution was five point eight million, and that is actually sixty percent of the overall special education expenditures. The rest consists of our state revenue of three point one million and federal revenues of a little bit over seven million. So looking forward and towards first interim, when we come back and present our first interim numbers for 23, 24, there are some considerations that we're just keeping on our radar. The budget updates for child nutrition program, fairly new program, and so we're wanting to make sure that we maintain and have a conscious budget there for our CNS program. Also, budget updates related to transportation for special education as well as our general, general education for Delmar Heights students, as well as budget updates for staffing and salary adjustments as needed, and considerations for Proposition 28, and status update for Proposition 28 at that time. So I'll turn it over to Chris for his work.
Yeah. And as we look ahead also, I would just share, we don't, at this time, have a ration or a vote reported with TK, but we do have discussions coming forward with our district priorities and our budget workshops. And we'll have budget workshops coming up next week in October, and we'll be going over and discussing those district priorities. And that's a big next step that we'll be taking as well. When we look at our historical summary, we have historical revenues. And I want to point out two things in this historical revenues. And with this bar charts, you can, you really see it stand out. And it's related to one-time funds because one of the things that Tiana just mentioned was the arts, musical, instructional materials block grants. And it made for a big variance between our estimated actuals and un-audited actuals because the state took money away and then gave it back to us. If we look at 2021, you'll see that that bar has a big red area. That's the federal revenues. That's when the ESAR money for COVID came. So we ended up with this one-time money for ESAR. We, as a district, really focused on ways that we could provide impactful support to our students and use much of that money. We've now used all that money over the first couple of years, but it was used over a couple of years. So we see these revenues that come in at a one-time chunk and then are meant to be used over a period of time. You'll see similarly, similarly in 22, 23, that blue section. That's our other state revenue, and this is the block grant, the oral word. So we had the arts, music, instructional materials discretionary block grant, which has a lot of discretion to it. There's also the learning recovery block grant, which we received. And as you'll remember, going into the 22, 23 budget, it is actually the largest education budget in the state's history. There's a lot of one-time money because the state also saw that the long-term forecast may not be as rosy as the single year amount of my income coming in. So there are these one-time funds. You'll see those are realized this year. And then those have spending timelines where arts and music and instructional materials discretionary block grant can be spent through 25, 26, learning recovery through 27, 28. So all the revenue comes in one year, and then we're spending it over a couple of years. And for, the members have been in for a couple of years, and we'll, we'll focus on it in first interim too. You have these restricted pieces that are in our reserve, and those will start spending down over a period of time. When we look at our expenditures, you'll see that we have the, the general growth in expenditures that matches with our revenues. But sometimes it doesn't go quite as much because we have these one-time expenditures, these one-time revenues that we're going to then spread out over a number of years. This year, we have expenditures at seventy points, almost seventy point nine million. Then as we look at our story. Then as we look at our historical property tax revenues, you'll notice that the last two years were quite low comparatively. And then this year, we did have a higher bump up that's been attributed to larger volume and some increases in sales prices, although we do not expect to see the same growth in twenty-three, twenty-four. We're budgeting at four percent, because we're seeing with the increased interest rates that the volume is going down, and it takes not only sales prices going up, but volume change to be able to change the property tax revenue we receive. So that will look at a summary of the other funds. We'll go through the other funds that are outside of the general fund. And the first fund we'll look at is Fund thirteen, which is our cafeteria fund. As we've shared, we've opened our CNS, our central kitchen, and we have deficit spends, but we understood what we were putting. In fact, we had budgeted eight hundred thousand dollars, and we were at eight twenty-one, so really close to what we expected. We would expect that number to go down substantially this year, if we're taking it all in-house. And fortunately, as you'll see when we get a couple of slides ahead, Fund seventeen is able to absorb this. So by saving for the initial operation of Pacific Sky School and the central kitchen, we have a safety net, and we know that we're going to be able to get through and move that program to become a cost control profitable program before it comes to affect the general fund.
Chris, that note just, that note was heard last year, what we had.
Correct.
A vendor.
Yes. So all this is twenty-two, twenty-three, so this is the actuals from last year exactly. So this is for when we were using LTC and had an outside vendor. This year, bringing in-house, we would expect the contribution to be much less. We'll be bringing it first interim. We'll be able to have some data that goes over the first quarter of the year, and we'll be able to give a, I think, a much better estimate as to will we have a deficit set, what will it be? But I will tell you that we expect it to be much, much less than this.
Thank you. Sorry, when you said profitable, were you referring to Fund thirteen?
Correct.
How do we have problems in that fund, and what, from where are we allowed to use the board?
So if you run a CNS program really well, you're going to be cost controlled and potentially slightly profitable. When you're profitable, it stays in Fund thirteen. It can be used for specific things around the CNS program. So it could be that we buy a truck specifically for CNS that we use. It could be that we buy equipment specifically for CNS. So it will be specific to this program, but the, one of the big benefits is that makes it self-sufficient, and then we're not taking money from the general fund, and we can move on to using Fund seventeen to support our cafeteria fund and our CNS program.
Yeah, because I know we're, like, having the education around the waste management. I don't know if that could be something that adults could use from that, if it becomes profitable.
Potentially, yeah. Next is Fund fourteen. This is our deferred maintenance. As I can assure you, we have set aside one percent, so six hundred and five thousand dollars this year. As we talked over the life of the bond, the board has, has talked over time about the importance of saving so that we are able to maintain improvements that we're making, and so we continue to put money into deferred maintenance. We have not used any of this money to date in efforts to hold on to it and be able to use it as part of the maintenance of the improvements that we're making to facilities. So at this point, the any fund balance is two point two million, and we plan to budget to continue to put money into this to save for the long-term deferred maintenance.
What, where is this, and what interest is it accruing?
So this is with the county treasury, so it's at a very conservative level. We aren't, as a school district, allowed to invest in the same manner that we would in a private company, but by reserving, we're able to set ourselves up so that we are, you know, are able to maintain HVAC systems and roofs and other things in the longer term. Fund seventeen, as you see, there's a smaller revenue and larger expenditures, and again, this is where we're taking the expenditures. And you're using this, it goes into the general fund. So you'll see some of these transfers in and out. This can't go directly to Fund thirteen, so it goes to the general fund, and it gets transferred into Fund thirteen. But in essence, this is supporting our CNS program in a manner so that we are not having to take money away from the instructional program and the programs of the district. As I said, I do not see it being anywhere close to an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit in our CNS program next year. So we may have some that we're using towards it, but we will have some money that we can then, some reserves that we can look at for another use after another year or two, depending on where we have with that CNS program. As we move on to Fund twenty-one, this is our Measure M, Series A and B, and you'll see the revenue there. That revenue is, we, as you obviously remember, when we finished Pacific Sky School, we brought an updated GMP to the board, which brought back two million dollars. So we're two million dollars under the GMP. That's what that revenue is, because it is no longer encumbered, and so it went back in as unencumbered money that can be used. So the net decrease is twelve and a half million dollars, and we are at sixty-three million dollars. That's for the total of Series A and Series B. We do still have Series C and D that we can find out for at around sixty-six, sixty-seven million dollars.
Each?
Total. And so then when we split it, and so as we get to the point where we need more money for Delmar Heights and Carmel Del Mar, and the next one, we're already having conversations with Phil Monroe up on timing, when would that need to happen? And we'll be looking at cash flow, and when would we then be the best time? So we're having really early conversations, because we wanted to make sure that we made good decisions so that we get in in the bond market when it's the best for the district and the best for our taxpayers.
Chris, I know we're having more discussion about this in the budget, or the capital workshop, capital, bunch workshop. Is that any fund balance sixty-three basically what we have, have left in, in, in the under, huh?
No, so that plus the sixty-six, I think sixty-six point seven million, so we have a hundred and one to nine hundred and thirty. I would say right now, with eighty people on site, we're probably spending three to four million dollars a month on Delmar Heights. And so that's going to roll through. So you'll see that number go down, and that's why we're already having conversations about when will we need to go out to. And with sixty-six point seven million, maybe it's half it. So in Series C, it might be thirty-three, thirty-five million. But we'll, we'll be chewing that up and coming to the board with more detailed information about that a little further down.
Okay, yeah, I'll wait for the information. Thank you.
Just a question, like, we had that fund for Pacific Sky for operating expenses. Do we need to do something similar for Delmar Heights, or is it since they're already operating, and it's just on different campuses, we don't?
Yeah, the reason we started that was because it was our ninth school. And so as you remember, when we went through the whole facility master planning process and talked about eight schools or nine schools, and it was decided to have community schools and open a ninth school, the, there was also the understanding that there are costs associated with that. So we started reserving for it. So it's allowed us to open the school and then allowed us to open the central kitchen. And then this is just a list of measurement and projects we've been working on completing. Pacific Sky School was a big milestone. Ocean Air Place, Ocean Air, Sage Canyon, Torrey Hills Upper Grade Place structure were all completed this summer. We've done modern learning environments. I think we had thirty-seven classrooms that were touched this summer, so a lot of work in classrooms. And then Carmel Del Mar administrative building had a new roof. There were some leak issues, and Carlos's team jumped right on it and set that up, so it was taken care of over the summer. And again, work in progress. As you know, Delmar Heights and Delmar Hills Academy, we update on each meeting. And then we are already planning for those, despite modern learning environments for next summer, looking at getting plans together and working with construction services. Next is Fund twenty-five. This is our developer fees, and so we, we don't have a large amount of development in the area at this point, but we do typically bring in a small amount, and so we have revenues of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, a small amount of expenditures. And so we have an any fund balance of one point three million, which is also some of the smaller clients in pocket that we can use in support of some of our facilities. Fund thirty-five is basically a pass-through account. This is where they place state funds, so the state facility funding program. We do apply for it. We do not get a lot of money for it, but we got about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Carmel Del Mar that was placed in this fund, and then it's moved into a fund that can be used. So it's really a place for the state to send the money to, and then we move it into the fund that's appropriate related to the project that was completed and that they're refunding us for. And that's why you see almost no money in this. Fund forty is our special reserve capital outlay. In this, we have some revenue. There's some interest. There's some that's actually related to our E-rate program. And then the bulk of the expenditures were for the renovations and furniture and upgrades we did to Suites one oh two and one oh three for our MOF and tech staff. It's really actually been a wonderful step we're all taking, and so we appreciate the support of the board. Both teams have enough space now. Warehouse is still, you know, working feverishly, especially in the summer. And now it's upgraded, and expression looks nice, and I think it's very good we're taking care of all of our staff as we did in that space.
So Chris, with that amount of six, nine plus, do we have that allocated for future projects? Or is that just there for any, you know, need that may arise?
So we, we included in potential use for the long-term facilities program. The one thing I hesitate with this, this can, this is one of the few funds we can use for our non-student-based programs, the district office, MOF and tech. And so we, we don't want to use all of this in case there's a need that's a little bit further down the line, or there are other funds that are really specific to schools and classrooms. But we would definitely use some of this potentially for different needs. We've used it in the past for furniture needs. We've used it in the past for some of our minor modernization. So it is something that we use in schools as well.
Yeah, it just seems like a pretty big amount to be sitting unused. It can only be used for capital, I'm assuming?
Only for capital programs. And so we also use the most restrictive funds first, and you'd use your CFD funds, and then you'd use your bond funds, and then you'd use something like this that's a little bit less restrictive. So we, you know, we hold on to it to the end, and if we run out of bond funds, it's something that we might use to, to fill the gap. And then our Fund forty-nine oh one and forty-nine oh two are our CFDs, so this is ninety-five dash one. The expenditures are, the bulk there is for debt service, and then we have revenues that are coming into the tax base. We pay the debt service, and there are some excess special taxes that we have, so we have some ability to use some of these funds. This is ninety-five dot one is Torrey Hills and Ocean Air. Ninety-nine dash one is Seymour Ridge and Pacific Sky. Similarly, we have, we have larger debt service in this area, because we have, it's a normal one, we've got some funds. We also have funds here we've used on Pacific Sky School construction, as we were ranking out project. So both of these have helped any fund balances in specific school sets that we could use them on. And then finally, Fund sixty-three is our enterprise fund. This has an increase in revenues related to being able to tie expenses to our standards learning opportunity program. And we, has led, this led to an increase in our fund balance. This is an area where we want to make sure that we have a fund balance that's healthier and reserved for a number of reasons. One, this can guard against uncertainties that we had with COVID that allowed us to keep the program going, and deficits spent pretty dramatically over a couple of years. This is also not covered under our general fund OPEB trust. So where we have the other post-employee benefit liabilities that we have for our general fund that we reserve for, it is not reserved for for the enterprise funds. There are some liabilities that are out there in the, the, the large sense. It's the potential for millions, but it's more in hundreds of thousands, and so we want to reserve some for that. And then the final thing, this program has historically helped to fund ASB spaces in new school builds at both Ocean Air and Seymour Ridge. So we're looking at, this is an area where we would use some of these ending fund balance to help fund the after-school program classrooms in the Delmar Heights school rebuild, and potentially in modernizations in the future. So it can help us with the facilities program where we're using our after-school programs and building our after-school programs.
I don't know if this is the time to ask, but there, I've had, you know, people in the book asking about the rate increases this year for ASB. Chris, can you speak to that?
I can. So this, the rate increase, it was, I believe, the first one since twenty nineteen. There were some changes in the, the, the class student teacher ratios, which increased the number of staff needed, and there were some staffing increases in costs. We looked at what our neighboring districts were doing. It's in line with what Solana Beach is doing as well. And so we tried not to do more than what was taking care of the increased costs that were coming through. And so it lined up with those increases related to staffing scenarios and staffing costs. It's about three dollars a day, the increase. And then the final fund that we report on is the trust fund. This is the Aaron Ellerman Memorial Trust Fund for the Delmar Heights School Library. It has a small amount of revenue and sits at thirty-four, thirty-four thousand nine hundred dollars.
Is that family involved in?
You know, it's a great question. I.
All around when she was.
Yeah, and so this was formed in nineteen eighty-six, the, the trust. And we've been looking into, and being that it's forty years old, it's been a little bit harder to find the exact. I'm still looking into information and, and understand what we could potentially use in her honor in, in opening up the new Delmar Heights library. But I, I'm still doing a little bit of research, because it is, it just isn't as much documentation as when I was originally started. So I have, I'm in the process of trying to figure out what we could use this for with the new school investments.
So thanks for that very comprehensive presentation from both of you. I wanted to ask a few questions. I just sort of chatted them down as we went along. On slide five, we talked about variance from estimated actuals, and there's reference to state revenues for arts, music, instructional materials. So that's Prop twenty-eight monies?
No, it's that's, sorry for the, if that'll make anybody dizzy. So the arts, this has caused confusion for a lot of people. The Arts, Music and Instructional Materials discretionary block grant was part of last year's budget. And so last year's budget had a lot of discretionary money in one-time funds. This was set out by the legislature and the governor to provide potential use for arts and music, but the discretionary piece was the key, and many, many districts used the discretionary portion of that, because you could buy things like textbooks. And so textbook adoption is one big thing that we were aiming to use it for. Some did Sturs and Beres offsets, and so it is actually not necessarily a block grant that you had to use for arts and music. It was named that, but also was very much about discretion and districts having a lot of various ways. So it is not in any way tied to Prop twenty-eight, although the timing of the two has led to some confusion.
Okay. And then we talked about Prop twenty, and on slide fifteen, not we have to go there, but. So I'm sure we'll get an update in the, in the next, I guess, the board workshops and so forth. But I'm just curious, in general, if we have increased funds that do come from the state for this, does it offset some of the monies we're spending today that could go to other instructional purposes? Would that be a plan of what we would do if monies do come in from Prop twenty-eight?
Potentially. And so the problem with Prop twenty-eight is it's a voter-written initiative, so there still is a lot of, there is a lack of clarity on the state on how it's being apportioned and how it's going to be audited as to how you're spending it. So we did not budget for it in the initial budget, and as many districts did not, because we also didn't even have a resource code. So at the time of the budget, we didn't even have a code as to, to, to put it into the budget. We will try to bring more information, but I don't think at the budget workshop, we can give you some generalities, but we are still awaiting more direction from the state as to how to account for and utilize the money in a manner that's consistent with the proposition.
Do we expect any of those funds to be flowing to us in this academic year or something for future years?
We do expect it this year, but we don't have that exact timing, and we've been told that we may not know how it's going to be audited until March. So there is a lot of guidance from organizations across the state that you want to go slow with, with Prop twenty-eight to make sure that we're doing it the right way and we're following it accordingly, and then going to be able to be audited and have used it in the manner that was expressed by the state.
So, you know, a question that's come up that we're receiving at the foundation is, wow, these millions of dollars are flowing from the state.
So I can tell you some millions. It will be under five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
We know an estimate somewhere in that range, but, but we don't, we have a close estimate of what it would be.
So all this money is flowing from the state, exaggerating.
Yeah.
You know, why do I need to give it to the foundations here if that's happening? How can we inform as the, the parent community that their monies for the foundation are, are still as important as they were before?
Now, that's a great question. We were just having a discussion about that on our team, and Allison Peiberg and I are going to work on some communication that, that would be helpful. And we're looking to, I'm looking to be at the next foundation meeting, so we're looking at how we can be supportive in the communication and answer questions. And some of them, like this, I may be able, have to say, we're still waiting on some information, but trying to give as much information as we can, help people understand and provide clarity as best we can.
Sorry, can I jump in? So is it five hundred thousand annually that we would be receiving, potentially?
It will squatch away a little bit, because it's a percentage based on the state budget, but it looks like it'd be somewhere a little under five hundred thousand dollars this year, and so it should be somewhere in that ballpark on an annual basis.
So if you don't mind me continuing, some technical questions. Slide six was a tabular list of expenditures, and then we also had a nice graph on eleven. And I was trying to reconcile the total on the graph of expenditure summary, which is seventy-three point eight million, to, was that tracking to the estimated number? to, was that tracking to the estimated actuals or the unaudited actuals?
Are we talking about this slide here that's...
Yeah.
So this is for unaudited actuals, and some of the footnotes here include the contribution for Sturz to have. And we broke out as well the nutrition costs and the, the foundation, 1.3 million.
I was just trying to look for the difference. It was roughly $800,000.
So that could be the transfer out for our child nutrition program that we have.
Okay, thanks, that's helpful. And then on Slide 12, additional general fund highlights, we talked about class sizes reduction for grades 4 to 6. Do you have an estimate of when that was put in place, how much that changed the budget? What's that delta in dollars when we made that change? Just roughly speaking.
I, I don't have an estimate. And are you saying, is this a historical question or a...
Like when it was first implemented?
Well, it just says class size reduction, grade four to six is a highlight. And I'm wondering, when we made that change, what did that cost us?
So the cost to go to 25 to 1 and in our, I don't know that I have that.
25 and 27.
So 27 is the contract, but 25 is what board is directing. So we've been staffing at for the last two years to keep our upper grades at 25 to 1.
And maybe, I don't really need the answer now. I think maybe when we get to the second workshop, I, I think the question's going to come up. You know, if we want to have a change in class sizes, what's the, what's the dollar impact?
Absolutely.
I think it'll be a good conversation for that workshop. On Slide 13, we talk about special education funding and being underfunded. I think that means underfunded from federal and state. And you mentioned about 60% is coming from the, the general fund. Do you have a sense of trends historically? Has the general fund been contributing 60%, 50%, 70% over time? Have you seen trends in one direction where we need more money from the general fund to help support special education?
Now, the historical trend has really been within 60 to 65% as an attribution from general fund for special education. So between 60 and 65%.
Do you have comparisons with other districts for that number?
Yeah, we can look, look into that.
Thank you.
And that might be a great discussion point again at the workshop as you're thinking of where we want to be investing priorities. And those were all of my questions. I realize as the new person, I maybe have more questions than others, but thank you very much for the hard work on the slides here and then the budget.
I think you added others to the slide, I think. You did.
Any additional questions? Thank you so much. And we are at closing items.
More approval.
Oh, sorry, my bad, my bad, my bad.
It's okay.
Oh, we need more approval for that. Is there a motion to approve the unaudited actuals? Two, second. Always a favor.
Aye.
Aye. Closing passes. And now we're at closing items. 12.1, board review, reminder of upcoming MSU events. 12.2, board review, reminder of upcoming MSU PTA events. 12.3, board review, preliminary items for October. 20.3, regular board meeting. And 12.4, adjournment of meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second. Always a favor.
Aye.
Closing passes, meetings adjourned at 7:46. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.